We can proceed with our workshop at seven o'clock.
Look at that. Look at that. Testing, testing.
All right, good.
Listen to that.
Start singing, Tim.
It's like a miracle. Maybe it makes me wonder if they've ever worked.
Yeah, as I say, it's never been on.
Now that you can all hear, there are no excuses.
I think you're right.
It's never been on.
No whispering anymore.
Yeah, no more whispering.
All right. So the first.
Now Matt isn't mumbling.
I guess we don't really call the roll, do we?
No.
All right, we're all here. Thank you, everyone, for being here. This was thrown into the schedule, so thank you for being flexible. We have so many items to cover workshops, so. First item, small business outreach. And we begin with an opportunity for a public comment. Before we do that, I will read the the motion that brought us here was from September 11 Town Council meeting of 2023, which the council, which was referred to the workshop, "A Review of Town Policies, Organizational Structures, and Ordinances Relating to Attracting and Retaining Non-Residential Small Businesses with the Goal of Identifying Specific Steps That Can Be Taken by the Town Council and Town Boards and Staff." So, anyway, we'll begin with public comment. I don't see anyone in the chamber. Is there anyone online who would like to comment?
No hands raised at the moment.
No hands raised, okay. We will begin. I know Counselor Anderson, would you like to make a comment? Kick us off?
Yeah, sure, thank you. We also agreed, this is also on our goals, and I had indicated at one of our prior workshops that I would be happy to take the lead on this. And Counselor Jordan said she would like to assist. And also Counselor Gillis, so I guess we can get started on it now.
All right, Heather, further comments?
I just want to do a little bit of kind of clarification, only because when I see non-residential small businesses, so I don't know if this is considered a small business, but it's a lobster outlet on Foller Road, which I think is in a residential zone. So is it businesses such as that as well? And I think we can, as a committee, maybe talk about that. And when we say policies, I guess we can iron out what policy might be. And I know that Cape Farm Alliance is working on some policy. And how do we define organizational structure? What do we mean by that? Or is that something we want our group to figure out?
I was kind of wondering what that meant, too, and I guess we can try to figure it out.
And then come back to the group with, here's how, here's the type of businesses that we feel that we're going to be focusing on and what we want to do, so come back with a plan.
Yeah.
I mean, shouldn't we be speaking to some of these small business people right now and finding out what their issues are so that we can bring that information to you? I mean.
The way, okay, the way I envision this is the three of us would have a meeting and talk about how to go about this. I've already received a list of all the businesses in town. And I was thinking maybe sending them a letter along with a couple of questions about, you know, what challenges, we want to talk to you about what challenges you had, what improvements you think could be made, whether there are processes that could be improved upon. And then have some sort of summit. And I don't know if it would be with all the businesses or sort of divide them up, like by category. I don't know, I haven't thought that far. But that's, that's sort of what I'm thinking might be the process going forward now that we're getting the official green light.
So the first step is when are we going to meet?
Yeah. Yes, I would think. Do you agree, Penny?
Yeah, I think that we get together and talk about it and then figure out what the process would be and just come back to the group and say, here's what we're going to do. If you have any child parallels, then feel free to come to one of our meetings.
Okay.
Counselor Gabrielson?
I think it's great that you guys want to take some initiative on this and have some discussions and report back. I'm just curious, from a, like, a public process perspective, and maybe Deborah can help us with this. Do we need to formally create a subcommittee? Or is it enough to just sort of notice that as a special workshop of a subset of the council? And I'm just curious on that.
I think if the council is in agreement, you all agree, you don't have any objections, and like you said, it would have to be a notice meeting, you know, with agenda minutes and so forth. So we'd be happy to help you folks through that, so.
I think, I think this is an exciting step. And I think we should take advantage of the Cape Courier. And I'd really like to see a story in the Courier about the work that you're getting ready to take off on and encourage them to get some feedback to you. Let them know what you're doing. Be a great way to communicate this nice step that the town is doing to make our town more business friendly. So Courier would be a great tool.
Are you all within this contemplating the idea of some type of economic development staff or focus? Or is that, are we too small a town for that? Or, I know this has come up, so I don't know.
It might fall under organizational structure. That's, when I threw out the question, I assumed that might be what the answer was. I was pointing at you.
Yes, I know there's been talk of the planner, you know, whether the planner, could you, I think she has said that, I believe, at some point that that would be a conflict with her role, so maybe she couldn't assume that had as well. I don't, but, you know, I don't know.
Don't you think the group would analyze whether that's a needed role? And it may be found that it is redundant and you just need to clarify the planner's role. That would be my thought.
You know, I just, my observation is, I think, like all of you with with the COVID situation, with, you know, with so many cities, including Portland, having downtown office space now being vacant. You know, law firms permanently, people working out of their homes. It would seem to create more incentive for small business in a place like Cape. You know, viable business, and so therefore does warrant. That's another reason to have this discussion and have maybe to consider some type of a staff expertise or focus.
That could assist the planner.
Speaking of small business, now, do you all have inside track on a bakery? I see fresh bread or banana bread or something.
Alwigs Brook Farm.
All right. Because we all want a bakery, so, okay.
Yes.
Just one, one other item for the group to also consider is back in January, if you recall, the council passed the small business amendments for small, the zoning ordinance referring for home business amendments. So that's, and we've got our first building permit relating to that. And it was the gentleman in, in the Broad Cove neighborhood who was looking to do that. So we've received the building permit for that. So you've already seen some, some changes for that. But then also publicizing that as an, as an option or a viable option where folks, consistent with the chairman's comments a few moments ago of commercial space in the city proper being vacated for folks working from home. So that might open some opportunities to think as, you know, either professionals, attorneys, or other, other forms of professions who may want to expand their home office occupation into something of a little larger scale. So there is some, there is some capacity there that could be developed, for sure. So that's, that may be something to consider in those conversations.
So low impact in neighborhoods.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Hopefully. Otherwise, you come back to have that conversation again in the future.
Remember, a farm can be anywhere.
Are there any further comments from any counselors? All right, we can go to item two. Request from Counselor Anderson to forward ADU amendments to the planning board. And Counselor Anderson, working with Ben McDougall, ordinance committee, town planner, bringing this forward. Thank you, Counselor Anderson, who's, who along with Counselor Thompson, served on the Housing Diversity Committee, who are all hearing about that report in their next item. So this all seems to me to be related. And at any rate, we begin again with an opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone online who would like to comment on this item?
No hands raised at the moment, Mr. Chairman.
All right, seeing no one online, no one in the chamber, we can begin the discussion, and I will turn it to Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Yes, the, we're, we're going to be talking about the Housing Diversity Study Committee tonight, the report, and one of the recommendations, there is a section on ADUs, which I imagine we'll talk about. However, these specific suggestions were generated from a meeting that I had with Ben and with Maureen about the grant that we were maybe going to apply for. We were, we were looking at setting up or standing up an ADU toolkit, and it was determined that, you know, we couldn't do the, the multiple architectural plans that I was hoping we would be able to do. So what we talked about doing instead was setting up a page on the website, on our town website, that would have frequently asked questions. It would have sort of a process explanation. It would have the, the relevant ordinances. There would be a link to, to architectural companies that actually do this kind of thing. And I know that Backyard ADUs, for example, builds a lot of ADUs. And they have, they have their own in-house designs and plans that somebody can pick, as does Knickerbocker. And there are probably other firms that we're not aware of. So put that information up there as well. And Ben pointed out these two issues that I thought, in order to get rolling on encouraging ADUs and making them easier, a couple of these changes really needed to go into effect right away. And there is an anomaly where if you have a standalone building and you want to turn that into an ADU, you can't. You've got to tear it down and then build new, and that's.
Doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense. It's rather absurd. So this is designed to deal with that.
And that would be the accessory structures
Yes.
and so forth. And I would just quickly ask Counselors Jordan and Harriman, who worked on this extensively in the past ordinance committee, if you have any concerns about this. Are you in agreement with these changes recommended? But I assume you are, but I don't, I don't know.
No, I mean, we worked extensively on the ADU amendments, but those aren't the ones that were passed. So yes, I do believe that these changes need to be made.
I will ask, and please don't take this as a, a criticism. I just, it's an observation because I, I read Ben McDougall's memo and I, and I looked at the definition changes. And I just want to ask if there are other elements within the LD 2003 amendments that we also need to tweak at this point in time? Or is this the only one? There may be other elements that need to be tweaked.
That might have been missed or overlooked, just to.
But, because I, and I say that because as I read this, I, I go, we had covered this base. But the, the amendments that were voted on and implemented didn't address the same definition. So only so that we help code enforcement if we want to have a quick run-through of the ordinance committee, kind of just assessing other, other places that we need to tweak in order to make sure that we don't have any, any gaps. That's my only question. I'm not opposed to this definition.
Counselor Gillis?
Speak into your, Susan.
Are you asking about more things on, on the ADU thing that needs to be que, tweaked?
The overall amendments that were implemented. I just want to make sure that.
Okay, no, I, I just wanted to make sure.
Run through it and just say, are there any anomalies here? I mean, the whole fact that there was an assumption about teardowns, that was interesting. But are there other little gaps that maybe we would want to send along to the planning board at the same time?
So I, it looks like Mr. McDougall did a review and came up with these three.
But in all fairness, that we were focused only on ADUs, not the entire structure. I'm not aware of anything else. I mean, perhaps if there is something else that needs to be fixed, our town attorney can let us know, or our town planner can let us know.
Okay. You mean, like review, like have them review it now? Or just if something pops up, then they'll let us know? What's your intention with that statement?
As far as I'm concerned, it could be reviewed now.
Well, that's what Penny is asking, is basically for it to get sent to ordinance so that we can review it and have the proper people review it, like the planner and the attorney and the ordinance committee.
I have no objection to that. But I would like to take these ADUs amendments and send them directly to wherever they need to go. Because I think these are.
It's a big gap.
Well, they're, they're little tweaks. I mean, they're, I think they need to be done. Now, the issue about whether or not, I mean, maybe there's a policy issue about whether or not they can be used as long, short-term rentals.
We had already.
Yes.
So we're going to send these ordinance changes to planning board without it going through ordinance committee first? Is that your request, one question? Second question is, doesn't this have to be voted on and sent to the planning board? Or can we just workshop it, nod our head, and send it to the planning board?
If I may?
Sure.
Our town planner informed me that it could go directly to the planning board. And that would be my preference because, I mean, I want, I'd like this to be a bit fast-tracked while being transparent, but I, that was her suggestion. That was Maureen's suggestion, that it would go directly to planning.
Well, I, so I would think, I don't think the procedure would...
Procedurely, I do not believe that it can just go. Like, it has been not voted on by anyone to be reviewed, and we can't vote on it tonight because we're in workshop. So literally, the ordinance committee hasn't voted on it, town council hasn't voted on it. So we're basically taking words that, I'm assuming Stephanie wrote, and we're just going to send them on without being voted on.
I didn't write them.
Then I...
But actually, you know, this was, I asked that this be placed on our agenda for Monday. And so I don't want, I don't want to suggest that Maureen didn't get it right.
Maureen doesn't do the agenda, Tim does.
She told me that it could go from the town council directly to the planning board.
Correct, if we had voted on it on Monday night.
So we would put it on the agenda for April to vote on.
Right.
Because it could be the case, especially with the prohibiting short-term rentals. Not everyone's in agreement with that policy. But if we could vote on it April to send it to the planning board, so.
But in the meantime, we have an ordinance committee meeting scheduled before that that could review it and take a quick look over anything else. So then we're not wasting more time if we wanted to do that.
Yes.
Thank you through the chair. If there should be of help, I think all your dates line up pretty well, to be honest, functionally, because we're on, what's today, the 13th of March? So the way the dominoes kind of line up, for lack of a better way to put it, April 8th, council has your council meeting. In between now and then, ordinance committee can also review that to make sure that's where they like to be. April 8th, you can put that on the council agenda for referral to the planning board. It's not a big building. I can talk to our town planner and say preemptively, put this on the April 16th planning board agenda for a public hearing, and you can refer it on the 8th. And the quickest, I mean, they're not meeting again until April, April, I think 9th, they'll have their, either the 2nd or the 9th, they'll have their workshop, but they don't need to worry about that. So they can have it on the 16th, they can hold the public hearing on that, back on the council agenda in May. And then you can, you know, you can then, at that point, hold a, schedule a public hearing for that as well, and then get that into place. And that gives us, to be frank, it also gives us the opportunity to make sure we adequately advertise as well and meet the statutory requirements when it comes to that. So I think that, I think we can meet Counselor Anderson's desire for expediency, but also meet the council's overall desire for staying inside the lines on the coloring, in the coloring book, so to speak. So I think we can accomplish all those goals with that, with that track. If that's, if that works with, along lines with where you'd like.
Great.
And if I may, well, unroll Mr. Chair. The ADU part is the first thing, you know, because this was approved in December, and you had that 30-day period of when, you know, before it became effective into law as an ordinance change. The first item that came up that we did run into, because there is some pent-up demand for accessory structures to be converted into that, and this was an unintended casualty from the changes. So that's the first item that came up because there was anticipated demand in the, within town to make those conversions. So that's why this really became front and center quickly. There, you know, as we go through and, you know, we walk forward and changes do come into play, we will, we will or may find, with any ordinance change, that there are areas that we need to maybe look at technical amendments. So there may be a couple, as over time, over the next couple of months, as, you know, as the world advances, that we may find that there are other technical sides of it, that we could come back with a larger recommendation to the council and for the ordinance committee to move forward with as a larger package of technical amendments. If that helps folks kind of see where it all sits in, sits in play. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can never line up like that. That's perfect.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah. That's perfect.
Man plans and God laughs.
By positioning it as in a bigger review, also allows things to be added along that same timeline. So like, if you're just saying that we're going to look at the ADUs right now and move the ADUs to that timeline, you're restricted to public notice of just the ADUs. If you want to take a more global look at the ordinance, focusing on the ADUs, but knowing that you could be touching other parts, that is giving everybody notice in the same timeline so that if something comes up a little bit later, then they're additions and not major changes that would require longer time. Does that make sense?
Why would we do that, though?
Why would you do what?
What you just described. I mean, we've got this issue. Have we identified any other issues?
That's my point. If you come up with an issue in two months, right? If we're, that's a new issue, you're not looking at it. You've got to start the, you've got to start your timeline from the beginning again. If you're telling us right now that we're going to send this whole ordinance to be reviewed, knowing that the ADUs need to be touched, then anything else that gets, comes up in the next month, or month and a half, or whatever, inside of our timeline, you're able to make those tweaks and still fall into the same public hearing set for, what did we say it was going to be, June, May, so that it could, so it could be voted on in June or whatever? So any other changes that might be identified in the next few months can all be tweaked at the same time. It's only covering anything that might come up versus fixing this and then having to start the process over again.
I guess I...
I've got enough issues on my plate right now. I don't see why we'd be looking for other issues if no other issues, this is an issue, but identified by our ordinance department. So I don't know that any other issues have been identified. So do we want to go look for more issues, or can we just...
I would think you'd want to look for issues. If this has created such an issue that somebody cannot move forward because of our oops, right? Don't we want to know if there's other oops in there that need to be identified and not make the next person have to wait six to eight months to get it fixed?
Well, structures did kind of come up, these additional structures did kind of come up late in our housing diversity conversations. So it wasn't something that I think we looked, spent a lot of time on early, through the months and months, but I don't know. I don't understand why we would want to be looking at other issues if they are identified, have them bring them forward. I guess I would assume that our town council has looked at, our town attorneys kind of looked at what we passed. If there were issues...
Have we asked?
She wouldn't review it without being asked, yeah.
Well, what's the reason for asking for it? Do you, do you have some identified issues?
I haven't looked at it since we voted on it, no, because I don't need to, but...
I don't think we need to, but I don't know, I'm only one vote, so.
I did, the way I looked at it is, and I support this amendment 100%, the way I looked at it is, and again, this is no judgment, nothing, it's just, we did it very quickly, and are there any unintended consequences? And it's a quick review, just to go, shh, nope, it all worked. It won't take a long time, I don't think.
You know, I guess if I could interject, since opening this discussion. These are not, and one of the reasons when I talked to Mr. Sturgis about sending this to workshop, you know, these are not technical issues, these are policy issues. And with the LD 2003 situation, you know, the division was, are we doing the minimum requirements required by law or not? So these were not like little fixes. These were intended because the law, the statute, did not expressly address accessory structures. So it was therefore not a minimum requirement. Now, we can go ahead and change the policy, like you're discussing, but that's, you know, and then the same with the short-term rental. The LD 2003 said a community may regulate short-term rentals, which we already have. So since we already have that regulation, that's different from the original version, was to prohibit short-term rentals. So that, it's not just a technical issue, but it's, however, it's a policy discussion. And if the board wants to go do a different route than LD 2003, that's fine. But I just think we shouldn't mislead the public into thinking these are like somehow oopses, technical mistakes from a rush or something like that. These are all carefully considered legal and...
So LD 2003 didn't require this.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, so it was referenced in the rulemaking, and by the way, there's a phrase in the rulemaking, and I would just for the record, as the ordinance committee, with the planner who does an excellent job, but in the draft, prepared for this, left out the phrase, "subject to accessory structure setbacks." Now, that is required by the state guidance rules. So that was in one of the earlier versions, and it should be put in, I believe, but kind of a technical amendment, but at any rate.
It's fine.
Counselor Gabrielson.
I'm all in favor of moving ahead with this and moving ahead on the timelines that the manager has outlined. I guess one question that I have, just thinking of the relative complexity of our short-term rental ordinance, and some of the challenges that we've had with enforcement and kind of keeping track of it, one of the things that I would hope to hear from, back from the ordinance committee is just an assessment from the code enforcement officer if, you know, the software that we use tags places by address, but I don't know if they're necessarily tagging listings by whether the structure that's being listed is an accessory dwelling unit or not. So how much additional enforcement burden, or maybe there's none, does it make to have to keep track of whether a listing also happens to be in an ADU or not? And I'd like, I'm not, I don't know that the, I don't know how the answer to that affects my vote, but I'd like to know the answer to that as part of the review process. It may, it may be something that's very technically fixable, but that's one question that I have reading this proposed draft through.
That's a good question.
We can work on that as a staff to try to find the answer for that, too. Counselor Gabrielson.
All right. Any...
So...
Yes.
I'm a little bit, I think there's something a little bit ambiguous or unclear, and I just want to be clear. So we're going to send this to the ordinance committee, and we're going to proceed along the timeline that we discussed. We've recognized that this was not a change required by LD 2003, but it's a change that we feel would further the spirit of LD 2003 by encouraging additional ADUs. Now, there was a little bit of a discussion earlier tonight about whether or not we should review all of our ordinances, and I want to know where we are on that. I mean, do we feel that there's anything, is there anything that LD 2003 required that we did not enact in December? I guess that's the question.
You know, I would, I would ask Maureen that question as part of this, and if she says no, or if she says there could be some confusion here, then you can address it. But I think, just ask, but I understand what Tim's saying, that we implemented an LD 2003. We aren't saying, I'm not saying, move it ahead in another direction. I just want to know that there's no ambiguity on the part of enforcement around it. That's all I'm, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, well, I'll, I'm happy to talk to Maureen about that and Ben.
And she, she may know. It was just a question, wasn't anything beyond that.
Because there is, I mean, there is some chatter out there that we're not in compliance with LD 2003. And if we're not in compliance with LD 2003, I'd like to know exactly where.
Right. That's it?
Or just don't pay attention to the chatter. If somebody feels they have an issue that is, that is supportable, they should come forward in a formal process, come to us and talk to us about it. The chatter, I'm beginning to pay less and less attention to. If they have a legitimate issue, a legitimate concern that they have with what we've voted on as a council, they should come forward and talk to us about it. Come forward and talk to the town planner about it. Come forward and talk, I mean, Matt's a very intimidating guy, but usually he'll sit down and visit, but chatter is often a waste of time.
So that's exactly what we could be doing by having the ordinance committee look at it and say, if you see a problem, would they come let us know? And tell us.
But we're basically admitting that we're listening to the chatter, and if we feel like we voted on as a council that the, what we put in place was right and complied, and we haven't had challenges, you know, legitimate challenges where they'll come and speak at our podium here, and we've got a lot of issues on our table right now. I'm not sure that this is one that we need to be spending any time on. And if somebody brings forward a real issue, that's another story. But right now, we've got a lot of stuff we're working on.
I'll, I'll speak with Maureen and see what, see what she says. How's that?
I agree with Counselor Thompson about the merits of rehashing this, which we, we all had a spirited discussion last...
We don't want to rehash, no.
...year or two. But I do want to clear for the record, the discuss, the mention about the non-compliance. The lawyer, in the newspaper articles and accounts of the meeting, our lawyer, Mary Costing, did not say that the substitute amendment was out of compliance with LD 2003 or what we passed. What she said was two things. There may be a legal problem with the motion to reconsider, or number two, whether there need to be additional public hearings for the substitute. She didn't say that the, what we passed doesn't comply with LD 2003. So that is directly misleading by members of the public who are saying that, and that should be ignored. And furthermore, as Counselor Thompson said, there has been no legal challenge. This is a town full of lawyers, and the time has passed to make the legal challenge. So at this point, I agree with Counselor Thompson, why spend the time rehashing and poring over this when there are no legal challenges, you know, no obvious problems? So...
Our town lawyer is being quoted as saying just that, that we're not in compliance.
Well, she's being misquoted. That's not what she said at the meeting, so. Unless, Mr. Sturgis, you have a different...
I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman. The conflict at the time, if I may, was mostly about the lineup of, the timing was what her concern was versus the structure. So there's elements that I think that she would want to, you know, if the council wanted to have a further review, you could direct the town's attorney to review that further.
You know, if the town attorney is saying that to people, then we've got another problem, potentially an ethics problem. So, well, maybe we could delve into that or get more detail, but at any rate, any further discussion, item two? All right. Item three is revisiting the ad hoc Housing Diversity Study Committee report, continuing the discussion from a prior workshop. And we will begin with opportunity for public discussion. Is there anyone online who would like to make a comment?
No hands raised at the moment, Mr. Chairman?
All right, seeing no public comment, we can begin our discussion.
Do you mind if I go first?
Sure. Counselor Jordan.
I will apologize upfront if this is long. I just want to say first, I think the work of the Housing Diversity Study Committee was great. And I think it offers us a lot of information and recommendations, and those are things... are things that we as a council can operationalize. But I think you've heard me say several times, we need, we need to establish a vision or direction of where we want to take these recommendations. Because as we, and my example is Fort Williams, was a fort when it was first purchased. It's an hour park, and that didn't happen by happenstance. It happened as a result of planning and vision and direction. So I see a part, a key part of what we as counselors do is to evaluate recommendations and establish policy that will guide the implementation. This is why Tim and I get along so well, because we both believe in policy and direction. So as the Housing Diversity Study Committee's work, it's a great piece of work, just as I said, and our job now is to operationalize this report, and how do we do that? I would propose that we have some sort of facilitated session to really set that vision and, you know, a vision or a directional statement such as Cape Elizabeth will encourage housing that will bring economic diversity to our community and create the opportunity for people that work in Cape Elizabeth to live in the community where they work. And we, we come to kind of a common agreement around what this goal and what this vision would be, and, and then, once you have that, the work that Stephanie put together will really start to fall into place because it'll help us prioritize that. So it'll help us determine things like, how will we be balancing or leveraging taxpayer dollars? Are we going to do a 501(c)(3)? We don't know. Are we going to leverage town-owned land? Could be. Encourage public-private investment? Are we going to have TIFs? These are the types of decisions that we as a council need to make and set that vision and those strategies. In the near term, we might ask about the low-hanging fruit, but do we all agree on what we want and how we want to get there? As we make decisions on density, what will guide that? We know that it's state law, I assume, but what else? Yes, there are recommendations here that suggest density, but we as a council can establish strategy and determine which direction and where we want that density to be without being counter to state law. So as I went through this, which I think is a great piece of work, now I see our role as setting that vision, that direction, because as I look at, and Tim and I had this conversation today, as we look at what brought Cape Elizabeth to what it is today, it was people sitting at a table such as this, saying, this is the vision we want for our town. We want it to maintain its rural character. We want it to be this. And so this housing diversity study and the outputs of that work is a long-range strategy that will take years and way beyond what we, when we will be here. So it's incumbent on us to kind of take this and say, directionally, where do we want to go? And that's the way, as I look at the work, I see our role. Because I often can't, I can, but that's where the kind of arguments start to happen. I can get into tactical, but tactical planning before we've established the vision and strategy only creates contention and not compromise. So that's how I would like to proceed with the work from the Housing Diversity Study Committee.
So, Counselor Jordan, could you, would you please read again your opening statement?
My vision?
Is that a proposed vision statement?
Oh.
Or a proposed goal statement?
My, my vision directional statement?
I think it was the first paragraph.
Cape Elizabeth?
Yep.
Cape Elizabeth will encourage housing that will bring economic diversity to our community and create the opportunity for people that work in Cape Elizabeth to live in the community where they work. And we may want to, and of course, I think what I missed here, and for people to age in place, you know, those are the types of things that as we think about this vision, then as we go now, what does it mean, a strategy from a, a funding perspective? Are we going to establish a 501(c)(3)? If we are, where does that take us? What does that do? Are we going to ask for contributions from our taxpayer, through taxpayer dollars? I'm not sure. Do we want to encourage public-private investment in places where we identify we want housing? Do we want, are there areas where, I'm going to go to the three and four and six units density, let's start taking those things that you always said to me, Penny, you've got policy and it's LD 2003, and we haven't set our policies yet. So that's what I'm asking, is that we take, we take our step and understand that we are creating a blueprint for the town. And, and it's not a tactical plan. It's a direction. This is where we're going. We've got the data. The people have done the work. We've got the recommendations. You take that and you really create strategies and goals that move you in that direction. It's like, here's one. The town's vision for Fort Williams Park is to provide a safe and healthy quality space for Cape Elizabeth citizens and visitors to enjoy. Yadda, there's more. That's the vision, and so every time a strategic plan is created for Fort Williams, you go and look at this. We have policy that is, that, that revenues generated by the pay and display parking program at Fort Williams will be employed for the following, and primarily offering operational expenses and capital improvements for the fort. Policy. That's what our next step is from my perspective for the Housing Diversity Studies work.
Thank you, Counselor Jordan.
Thank you.
A lot of work, and so, any reactions or further thoughts? Counselor Gillis?
I have a couple of questions, and I don't, Tim, you might be able to answer it. I was going through all this this weekend, and were incomplete surveys thrown out? The people that didn't do the bottom half of that long survey, were there, they included in the results?
I think we went through that quite a bit. An incomplete survey was not included in their survey results, right? So somebody went down, we had a series of questions, got down to a more complicated part of the survey, and we saw that a lot of people were dropping out of that.
I dropped out, and I was just curious, it's like, oh, my other stuff doesn't count?
Yeah. So that was, that was definitely one of the problems.
And then my other question about the survey was, there was no question about how people voted on the ordinance changes. So how do you attest to the bias?
Well, I don't know if there's a bias, but it's called weighting. The school board, the, the school building advisory survey that most recently we did had a weighting piece in it, and the weighting piece was, they specifically asked, how did you vote on the referendum?
Right.
So if the results of the survey were significantly different than the vote, the way the vote came out, you could, you could weight it. It turned out it was, they had a factor that they applied to that. This had no weighting to, to, to that.
So you have no way of knowing?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there was, there was issues with, there was, there were certainly issues with the survey.
No, I'm just, it was a curiosity thing.
The weighting piece of it was, was one of the issues.
And just to be clear for the public, Counselor Gillis, when you refer to the weighting, the vote on the ordinances, you're referencing the town center.
Yes, the town center ordinances. So like if people voted, I'm, I'm just curious.
Xantin project ordinances, okay.
The one, the one weighting piece they had was, as I recall, Stephanie, was age.
Right.
So, and the way, that was an interesting piece. So the way it's explained is, there's so few people that were younger voted on this. If a 19 or 20-year-old actually completed the survey, their impact on the survey was doubled. So if a 64-year-old sent the survey results in, they came in and it was, the impact was one. If a 19 or 20-year-old voted or sent in a survey, their impact was doubled. So there were, that was one of the biggest, but that was the only weighting piece that was applied to help with the credibility of the survey.
In this one?
Yeah.
There was no test for self-selection bias.
Okay, that's, I guess that's what I was asking.
You know, we, we went through a pretty lengthy process of trying to control. We sent QR codes to all the towns, but then it ended up getting added to social media sites. There was no control where, I mean, people in Portland could have easily gone on and filled out a, so it, the survey was designed initially to keep control and have Cape Elizabeth people complete it, but there was no way of really controlling how that actually happened. So that was another issue with it.
So I have a question for Counselor Anderson. I believe in the, as I recall in the past, you have focused attention on a matter of, that's been a great debate in Augusta of, I think it's AMI, the income levels. It's confusing to the public, you know, of 80%, 60% of median income in an area, and I know you've spent a lot of time looking at this. Maybe you'd want to comment. I, I do know that we now have in our council goals, reference to 80% level versus 60% level. And maybe Counselor Anderson, if you could explain this to the public, that'd be great.
Yeah. If I may, first of all, I'd like to say I agree with Counselor Jordan. However, I do hope that we can identify some low-hanging fruit and get moving. And yes, we do have in our, in our town strategic map, we have a goal of ensuring diverse housing opportunities and encourage development of affordable housing opportunities for persons making 80% or less AMI. So that, that travels nicely with the vision statement that Counselor Jordan had, and so I think it's making a lot of sense that way. In terms of, okay, let me, let me talk a little bit about AMI. AMI stands for area median income, and every area has its own area median income. And I looked at this today, I did not, Counselor Chair, right, we did not discuss this. I did not know that you were going to ask me this, but I did, I did look at it today. The AMI for our area right now is $82,810. 80% AMI is $66,248, and 60% AMI is $49,686. So what do those figures mean in terms of our workforce? And that's really what we're looking at. I looked at the contracts for police, public works, and school department. Our police, after four months on the job, they make $51,579. So that means at 60% AMI, they would not qualify, they make too much money. At 80% AMI, they would qualify, and ergo, that's why I keep talking about 80% AMI. For public works, the lowest-paid equipment operator makes $47,000, so he or she would barely make the 60% AMI. But after being on the job for a short amount of time and all the other positions in public works, including lead equipment operator, mechanic, garage foreman, and parks foreman, make too much money to qualify at the 60% AMI, but they would qualify at 80% AMI. Teachers are in the same boat. Somebody on, first day on their job may squeeze in just a little bit under. At zero years, the, with only a bachelor's, their salary is $48,000. So they're $1,000 less than the 60% cutoff. But if they take on a coaching position or anything else, it puts them over. So I say, a teacher first day on the job also makes too much money. And all the administrative support personnel in the school department make, make too much money at 60% AMI. The ed techs, about half of them would qualify and half of them would make too much money. So I think it is important, if we are concerned about providing housing opportunities for people that serve our community and teach our children, I think it's important that we keep our eyes on projects as a goal at 80% area median income.
And that's a strategy.
And I, I would like to see that as part of our strategy, because at 60%, we exclude all those people.
And if I might just add a little to this AMI conversation, that is only our employees' income. If that employee has a spouse or there's other income, that all adds on to it. So if, if, if any of our employees are actually a dual family income, that would also boost them very quickly above where they'd, they'd need to be to be able to qualify at the 80%.
Yes.
It's the total income of the household.
And if they have, a lot of them have little part-time jobs, too. But I have to say, in that vein, if they have any dependents, then that figure goes down, or they would qua.
Yeah.
The larger the household, the lower the number needs to be. So if you have an entry-level teacher who is a single person without an additional income, and he or she or they have a dependent, they probably would qualify.
Yeah.
So it works both ways.
And the only other thing, this was our charge that we got, it was the seniors that wanted to stay in place, Penny mentioned them, as our town employees, but the third part of our charge was the young families. We, we need to continue to keep the young, young families that we hope to encourage to move to our town. We need to, we need to address that, because we do have a, a school enrollment that continues to go down. This coming fall, they're going to be down in the 1400, mid 1400 range, so it's definitely a challenge for a young family. What'd you say, our median household is like 730 now, Matt? I just got bumped up, so it's, we're not an easy town to afford to be able to find a place to move in. So as we're looking at housing, we need to keep them in mind as part of that. So if I could just add that to the couple that Penny mentioned, those were the three charge, the three areas that you charged us with.
So do you have any questions about AMI? Anyone?
Mr. Sturgess.
Counselor Anderson, as well, the, the ed tech salaries actually will, will actually, there's been some legislative changes as far as compensation goes with the recent bill that is going to dramatically change that compensation level for your ed tech positions. That would push them actually in the, you know, as, as a, as a raw number individually above the, or into the 80% AMI as well from, so from last year's numbers to where we are now, going forward in 25, you're going to see that that's going to change as well. So that supports your, your hypothesis.
I didn't realize that, but thank you. I didn't realize that, but thank you. Yeah. The starting salary for that now is nineteen fifty-six an hour, and so that's going up.
Supposed to. I think legislatively, and don't hard quote me on this, but speaking with our HR department, just because we were looking at upcoming impacts of legislation that passed in the current session, I think it's going like twenty-seven. So it's almost a fifty percent increase in compensation. Now, the state's covering that gap, so it's not as if the school budget's getting a massive hit, at least, you know, at least not this year. Obviously, wait and see where it comes, because the state giveth and the state taketh away. But that, going forward, that will, you know, in the next fiscal year, that will, they'll make a change.
Well, and I also talked to some small business people, and their employees make too much money, too. And, and just for a reference, if you want to look at this in terms of hourly rate, sixty percent AMI is twenty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents an hour, and eighty percent is thirty-one eighty-five an hour. So that means that anyone that makes more than twenty-three dollars an hour would not qualify to be eligible for housing that is offered at the sixty percent or lower AMI.
Councilor Anderson, that answer was so complete, thorough. And I think, does this mean now we don't have to go through the five pages of Excel spreadsheet?
No, and, and it's actually thirteen pages.
I, I didn't know if that was helpful, Mr. Chairman, to put that up there, if you'd like me to, if you're planning on going through that. If you'd like to, if not, just let me know with the council, because I could push that out to the folks at home who want to, who are watching online as well, if that discussion comes.
Are you looking at the time?
No, Councilor Gabrielson, I think you had mentioned you might have to leave.
I do, I, but not for another ten minutes or so.
Because I could let you pick your comments before you leave.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. I, I tend to agree with Penny that I'd like to have a little bit more discussion around what, you know, the directional goals are. But I'm also not opposed to, to doing both at once. I, I think there are some things in here. I'm looking at, you know, things like 1B, for example, allowing duplexes to adhere to the same standards as a single family within the RC zone. That seems, some of these things seem pretty straightforward to me. And I think, so I think we could, even as we are looking at policies around, or aspirational statements around strategies or, or goals that we're hoping to achieve, I think there may be some things that we can also work toward picking off at the same time.
Do you think that, because I, I've thought about this. Do you think that if we agree to vision, then as we go through these, we may say, this is a policy statement, we need a strategy around this one. And then we develop, we develop, we'll know the ones that really need strategy to help drive the direction.
I, I think so. And, and I guess to, to the discussion that we just had on AMI, and how that impacts, you know, for example, younger families who want to move into town, I, I think the real, the real goal that I hope we're chasing here, I mean, I am fully in support of making use of all of the available tools around subsidized housing where that's appropriate, and making sure that everybody has access to a safe, decent, affordable place to live. But from my money, if you're looking at attracting and retaining young families, what we really need to be going for is naturally occurring affordable housing. And, and so that says, you know, we need to find some ways to drive down the cost of new housing creation in town so that somebody can build a house that a young family can afford.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I'd like to see that reflected in our, our vision statement, you know, to some, I don't know how exactly, but that, that's what I hope, I mean, that's where I'd like to see us going with this, is not just the subsidized, although that, that is important. But I think, you know.
I think that's a great point. That's why I think it's this whole brain trust that takes this work and says, okay, here's, here's the vision. And then, and then we determine how we get there. Because ten years from now, people are still going to be following that vision, or twenty, I hope. But to get there, I truly believe I'm, I'm a, a person who believes in facilitated dialogue because they're going to capture all of the thoughts, the disparate thoughts, and help get them into some cohesive directional statement.
I really like, I, I really think the statement, Penny, that you put together almost does the, the whole thing. I mean, I think a little bit of tweaking, and I'm wondering if, given the fact that we've had an eighteen-month study, we, we do have the results of a survey, if that can be our data, and if this group-
That is the data.
That is the data.
Right.
And so I think from that, we can craft this vision statement.
Mm-hmm, I do, too.
So why do we need a facilitated?
I, I, that's a suggestion. I find that people who can draw out statements like Jeremy just made, that can get embedded in even a more, a broader vision, and then you set your, your goals. It's not a long process. It's like probably one meeting. But it's, but I don't, I don't have a problem crafting a vision statement without somebody. I just think that having somebody draw it out, and I know that GP Cog has worked with other communities on, on doing that.
Would, would your vision be that we would, the town council would craft this, and then we'd have a public hearing on it?
I, I really think it would be, I thought about that, about whether we have a public hearing on it. I think we've got to test it in some way. I think that otherwise we're creating a vision that is not representative of the, the public, even though, or I've grappled with, I'd go, okay, we heard all this input, it's right in there, so why do we need to hear it again? But basically, what we will have done is taken that work and synthesized it into something that says directionally, this is where we're going, just like that direction statement vision for Fort Williams. And that's, that's lived a long life. So we want something that's enduring. So we don't want the community to go, well, you didn't ask us if that's really what we wanted. So I think we should.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't want it to take a long time because of, just like you say, you spent eighteen months on something. But then we've got to look at the recommendations, because as I read the recommendations, each one of them, I said, ah, strategy, strategy. And I went to the next one, strategy. If you paid me a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, I could write the whole thing, just based on what I've seen. Oh, no, I can't take that. That's not in our code of ethics. But, I mean, it's all right there. It really is.
Well, I, I hope we can talk about a little low-hanging fruit.
I don't, I don't have, I, I don't have a problem with talking to low-hanging fruit as long as I know what is the criteria we're using for the low-hanging fruit. Are we looking at things that have the least amount of impact on neighborhoods and people's homes and yada, yada, yada? Are we looking at things that have no cost to the town? Is it minimal ordinance change? What's the criteria we're using in order to determine low-hanging fruit? You probably have what's high-impact, medium-impact, low-impact. So then if you take that as the measures, then what is low-impact and what's high-impact? That's when I think about going through things like this, we have to have some level of agreement as to what we're looking for. And you can develop that by Jeremy saying, I think this one is a low-hanging fruit because I, I don't see a, a big impact at this point in time because it's blah. So then you go, okay, that's what low-impact means. But we've got to have something that guides us through it. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Chairman.
Because I may have a different opinion than you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Thompson.
So, one of the things that would make sense to me, because clearly this was a challenging, this is one of the most challenging committees that I've ever been on in the town, identifying, identifying what, what we could actually come back to the town with recommendations of, that was doable. I would have changed, seriously, going back just a little bit, I would have changed your pro, the process quite a bit. I would have waited to do the study first until the committee was put together. I would have allowed the committee to actually put the study together and find out what they thought needed to be. So the forty-five thousand dollars on that study, we hardly looked at it. I'm not sure how much the town council's really looked at it, but I would have done that. I would, I would recommend to the town council, if you can't find staff to support a committee, and we got a new committee coming up, we just voted on the other night, if you can't find staff to, within our staff, or that lives in town, I'd recommend you, you probably rethink that one, because the staff situation was very difficult. But all that, all, having said all that, the biggest challenge that we had was, where do we do this? You know, where, where's the land? Where can, where can we, we want to do affordable housing, we all agreed we want to do affordable housing, where do we do it? And, you know, we, we've got some options that we, we're going to be able to look at down the road. I think, I think Goldcrest, one side or the other, may offer us some, and I'm looking forward to the study that we're working on. But it's the only real town-owned property that offered us a large opportunity, without changes to the ordinances. Apparently, the ordinances that we have in place could apply to, to Goldcrest. But if we're serious about it, that means we would be willing to, we would be willing to come together, and I'm not supposed to use the word compromising, we're, to draw us together in consensus. But, you know, there, there's some solutions out there, but the finding of the land in this town, part of the great planning that we've done for decades and decades, and Deb's been here for a lot of it.
Decades.
We, when Penny and I got together, this is a really well-run, really well-organized town with great ordinances. Seltz done a nice job with us. I, I look at these all as great ordinances. I, I bristle a little bit when I now hear them being referred to as barriers. But if we could get together and draw some consensus and find solutions that don't need ordinance changes, that'd be a great first step. And that, and I guess that would be one definition of low, low-hanging fruit. What can we do within town-owned property now that would not require any ordinance changes? That'd be a nice, easy first step to consider.
That was well said. Thank you. Councilor Anderson.
I, yeah, I have, when I think of low-hanging fruit, I guess I think of things that won't be too much trouble and won't be controversial. I think, I, I'm thinking of two categories of low-hanging fruit. One is the ADUs. And I think we've made a lot of progress, and there's a, there's just a couple more things that were recommended in this report that I was hoping we could look at tonight that would sort of, you know, put the lid on, you know, where we need to be with ADUs. And the other thing is back to Councilor Gabrielson's comments about what can we do to encourage the building of smaller homes? I mean, if you're talking more affordable, you're basically talking smaller. And I, I would look at the category of what, of what is known as non-conforming lots. We have, most of the neighborhoods in town are lots that are non-conforming. And in those neighborhoods, there are some empty lots, which you can't build on because, and so one of the recommendations is to reduce the lot size and get as many of those non-conforming lots into a conforming status as possible. And that is in-
You think that's non-controversial? I love how naive you are.
Well, I, I-
But I agree with you. I think that's a great one. I, I agree.
We talked a lot about that, trust me. I mean, that-
I agree.
It's maybe a, a goal, a, a great goal, but it's not going to be without controversy. But it's still one, I think, worthy of-
Right.
We might, we might find that by doing something like that, we could at least find some that would not get great pushback. But that's something, it's, you go back to the two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan, that was one of the recommendations I think we looked at way back then, so.
And so now we're taking all of that, and we're setting the direction. Because I, I agree with you, Stephanie, that, it's when we talked about it in the comp plan, that's like one of those obvious things, why, why can't we do that? But what I think about is that that is aligning with directional statements. And, and I'm, I wouldn't necessarily consider it low-hanging fruit. It's probably a, a medium from my perspective, because as we go through doing that, it's going to create controversy. But I think it's something we should do, but we need to let people know, here are the, here are the things that we see as bringing more housing and diverse housing to Cape Elizabeth. I do think that part of that is density, and we've talked about that before, because there's no, there's not a lot of land opportunity. So you're going to get it through density. And I will just say that we have not necessarily voted on whether, or put forward as a strategy, whether town-owned land will be used for housing development. I'm not opposed to it, but we haven't all agreed on it.
I'd like to ask Mr. Sturgess, if memory serves me right, there were seventy or eighty infill lots?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
But they're not all buildable.
So is that what you're referencing, specifically the infill lots?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay.
Some of them would, if, if they were serviced by sewer, I think it opened up the opportunity for, some lots could be, so if there's, maybe, I don't know what the plan for sewer expansion in town is, but that certainly helps when you're talking about a small lot.
Well, most of these lots are already on sewer. And that's sort of the beauty of it, because it, it wouldn't really take town infrastructure. And if you've got a smaller lot, you're going to build a smaller house.
That helps.
So that's why I like this, and that's why I consider it low-hanging fruit. But I, I think there is going to be, yeah, there are going to be a butters that are going to come in and say, my kids used to play there, and whatever. I mean, there, there will be people that-
Exactly.
That object to it.
Exactly.
But the only way we can get any of this moving is to tee one up and see how it flies.
I want to go to Tim's comment, even though I, I know they're sewed. But another, as you build this direction for housing diversity, one of the, a strategy would be sewer expansion in order that, blah, 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 blah. Those are the, those are the things that we all need to agree to, and that our community needs to know that we have in the plan, so that when you- needs to know that we have in the plan, so that when you start spending money on something, they know, oh, it's taking us in this direction. So, but the ADU thing is, I agree that we should do it.
There's only two more things here that would finish off the whole ADU section.
And so then that gets crafted as ADU, and it has to go through the whole process of public comment, or any ordinances that need to be addressed, which I think you already did. Will it, does it take town funds? If so, what is it?
Well, the only two left under this would be that the town should consider proportional changes to setbacks in lot coverage to allow detached ADU development.
Okay, ordinance change?
That's an ordinance change. And, you know, I mean, if we agree, I mean, we, that could be teed up right away. And then the, the last item here, because we've already done most of them, is number six, the town should develop a system to track the number of ADUs to determine policy changes that may need to evolve.
So if we said that the low hanging fruit that we will work on is around ADUs, and then we're also doing directional high level at the same time, that could tee up an ordinance change, and we could see how it flies.
Mr. Chairman, do you have any kind of an update on where, what's on the, through your main municipal association commission and work? What, where is being worked on in Augusta now that could be coming down the road, you know, furthering the work of like the LD 2003? Is, is there anything that we should be looking at as part of our planning?
I reached out today to get the status. The one bill that's been most upsetting to the main municipal association has been the idea, notion of building a statewide building permit review board.
Oh, my God. I thought that got killed.
So that has stalled.
It got, didn't it get defeated in committee?
However, hang on.
No, we want to know the answer.
That's been the big one. However, the answer I got was, you know, the session is continuing until mid, late April.
The clock is ticking.
There's more time. And so you all may be aware of a, some local town votes of late, one in Cumberland, which got some attention, in which a affordable housing development that was supported by the town manager and the chair of their board and all that, was soundly defeated, 69% to, whatever, you know, I don't know if they're on the side or no. That got some attention from the housing advocacy community around the state, and so they promised to go back to Augusta. So the main municipal association reported me today, they're hearing noise of potential additional legislation or efforts. Whether or not there's enough time, I don't know. So the quick answer is, so as of now, no, there are no immediate pieces of legislation we would need to consider impact, but there might be.
What, what are they considering around that?
They didn't give me details.
Wow.
I'll find out.
That would be really good, because that's, so, I mean, LD 2003 happened, and somehow it should have gotten stopped, but it didn't. So we don't need another one.
Two, there were two bills that were...
I don't want to argue for two years.
There were two bills up there that both got killed in, finally in committee. One was the one for a state. If you didn't, you could bypass your, your town licensing procedures and go right to a state one, which did get killed. And the other one was that a town couldn't set a minimum lot size of less than, or more than 5,000 square feet. And that also failed in committee. But Cumberland is, they're, yeah, we don't, we don't know what's going to, I mean, I think a big reason, or a part of the reason why Cumberland failed is the AMI issue. It would not allow its employees to live there.
Exactly.
And people understood that.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, Mr. Sturgis.
Commissioner Anderson, to your question as well, and to Commissioner Thompson's question, we're the managers, Southern Maine managers, like, we meet once a month online and had a conversation after the vote from last week. Part of the conversation was the thought that in the next session, because the next session's the, the first session, so, you know, basically the rails drop and everything gets a little bit more loose, loosely affiliated. However, the discussion was that we anticipate that there'll be a permit-by-rule approach for housing, for, for multifamily housing, that, so they'll take that away from, you know, similar to what we've done with regulations of wetlands and things along those lines, where they, that's been taken over as part of the authority of the state, that they may end up growing that into, like, the housing question for large multifamily. We'll go more to the statewide side with a permit-by-rule approach and take it right away from the towns, and because of, you know, experiences that we've all, that we've all had. And there's, I think there's three or four more in the near, near future that are also lined up for votes probably in June. So I anticipate that that, that the bill may be dormant at this time in the legislature, but that, I have a feeling that that will be coming, coming back through our...
But that would not be until next January, right?
I think that'll be for next, we anticipate that that'll be in the next, next legislative session, if this one doesn't get CPR and, and comes back onto the table by some...
Are you kidding?
I wish I was, but that's, those are serious people making that conversation.
I have to tell you, and I, I know this is being recorded, and I hope that they hear me, that Labor and Housing Committee is out of control in Augusta. The people who sit on that, and you know how liberal I am, they're beyond me. And I deal with them all the time during this session from a labor perspective, and they have no clue. And so, can I be on MMA the next?
No, but, I mean, I do think, when you look at something like that, what, that's coming down the road, based on what a lot of the town managers in Southern Maine think, that further erosion of home rule. I think the other bill that I heard that's being talked about up there is, is what Massachusetts has done, is basically dictating to a town, this is your goal, for, these are, this is your number, you've got to live to this. And, and so when, when we're talking about a goal for affordable housing starts over the next 10 years, and the number of ADUs we want to have, I think if that's really something, as Matt's saying, is going to be continually taken away from us, and we're going to have that dictated, I'm a little more reluctant to establish a goal. Now, if it's not going to happen for a while, maybe I would be able to have some kind of a non-binding, let's have a pie in the sky kind of a goal, but I'd hate the town to, to put a goal on us and then have a goal dictated to us. Because I think if they, if they make it mandatory, there's another word for it, but basically they dictate what we have to do. I think funding comes with that. If, if we get a mandatory required goal, then I think we get some funding from the state. But if we've already established a goal that is at or above that, then we probably don't get some funding to help us with our affordable housing goals. So I'm a little less reluctant to, to say as a, as a council, a very, very firm goal on what we'd like to see. Because if that gets eroded and taken away from us from a control standpoint, then, then it could have some negative financial effect on the town.
Don't you think if, if there was, if it was demonstrated that towns were setting goals, that, that that is a more positive thing, that we're already doing this? Then when, then when you go to Augusta to testify, it's like, we're already doing this. Here it is. You don't need to do it for us, because that's what has to start being demonstrated. That's why LD 2003, they, you talk about the ordinance barriers, yada, yada, yada. They saw that towns weren't, or felt that towns weren't doing anything. I think towns have to demonstrate that they are doing it. That's my opinion.
And I guess, the other thing I'd say is, if we're talking about a goal in our town to hit our three targets, the older people that want to downsize, the young families that want to move in here, and our town employees, and we're, we're targeting the group that would qualify at the 80% AMI, then I, I think those are goals I'd feel comfortable talking about. I think the targets that are going to be coming from Augusta are probably going to be broader than that. They're going to be talking about the 60% and the 30%. And we're going to, that's going to be a dictate that we're going to have to accomplish as well, so...
They're going to say 100 housing units, or something. They're going to start talking housing units. That's my, that's what I think. And then it's going to force density, and that's not what we want to happen.
And they're already talking about, in neighborhoods that have been already designated as high-growth areas, then there, that's when you're going to dictate it. So one of the recommendations in the study is to expand our high-growth neighborhoods. It'd be another reason I'd be opposed to doing that, because that exposes those neighborhoods that aren't yet identified as high-growth to that density requirement.
So that goes to, if we are going to create our vision and direction for implementation of the Housing Diversity Study Committee's report, we need to pull those things out, that this is the direction we want to go. So that we, we're setting it so everybody sees it.
You know, one of the, LD 2003 contains a directive that the Department of Economic and Community Development was set statewide and regional housing production goals. I've called up there a few times, and they, last time I spoke with somebody up there, they really hadn't made any progress. But there is, the housing summit, is anyone else here registered for that?
No, I got a day job, I'm sorry. I wish I could go.
Well, I'm going, and I registered, and I, you know, might be able, there, there might be more information along those lines there. I know GP Cog says that we have to do our area 20, was it 22,000 or 24,000? Thousand new homes in the next five years. It was either 22 or, do you remember, Tim, what it was?
I think, I think it was 22,000. In the greater, so that would be the greater, I think it's basically, GP Cog covers all of Cumberland County and maybe a couple additional towns, but it's basically the greater Portland area, they've identified the need for 22,000.
Remember, Bridgeton's in Cumberland County also.
Yeah.
Okay. It goes way out there.
So the challenge, I mean, the bottom line is, affordable housing is going to be something that we need to, to get together on, work together on, build some, there's going to be a lot of consensus building and compromise that needs to be, I mean, we had people that came to us and wanted to do it at Fort Williams, you know, Lyons Field. I mean, we had to get, so those are things that you've got to, and we kind of pushed back on all of that, but there are going to be some tough choices for us. And, and it may be that, that, you know, and unfortunately, there's going to be probably a lot of, a lot more opportunity for public input on this, but it's not going to be an easy problem for the town to solve.
It is if we set the direction. I mean, it's not going to be easy, easy, but I, I just believe in frameworks. And I think if we have a framework, people will understand where we're going.
Yeah. And we, it's doable. It, I'm not, I shouldn't say that it's, I don't want to give the impression we can't do it. We could definitely build affordable housing in Cape Elizabeth, definitely do that.
So what's our direction?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, Commissioner Jordan, I think you, you really set a great tone to get things started. And oftentimes, the way the council has worked historically, and you know this as well as I do, you set your vision and your goals, or you set your vision, and then from there your policy flows. So I think you've done a great effort to get things started this evening, and I know it sounds funny, but, but this is a marathon. You know, this isn't something that really...
It is a marathon.
...that you bang out in one night. So I think it's, you know, you establish that, then you establish your policies that flow from that, and then the council, and then you can, you know, you have your goals that also are attached from that policy. You know, it's almost like the lathering effect. And then from there, you get your, you get your deliverables that come from there. And hopefully, you know, they could be ordinance changes, it could be, you know, affordable housing tiffs, it could be all the different tools that might be available that, that the council could put to its discretion. So as this evolves and that conversation grows, that I think you'll, you'll get there, because, and then, and to Commissioner Anderson's thoughts as well, the low hanging fruit, if it's there, you can, you can pick that off, and then you can say, well, this is consistent with the, the vision that we've set and the policies that we've established, and then it can flow from that pretty quickly, I think.
So are you saying, because I'm a person who likes to, just like I see the Fort Williams policies written and vision, that I see, it could be one page or two pages, but I think we need to do it. And, and everything flows from that. And it's not going to be perfect. It's going to be the start, and we're going to have to tweak it. I, I know that GP Cog has done this with other communities. I just want to know if that's the direction we want to take, or do we want to craft it ourselves, which will take, I think, more time. I think with somebody getting us through all this discussion we've had right now, would have been captured, consolidated, we'd look at it, and we'd go, okay, that's, that looks good. We just have to have the conversation again. That's my proposal, but...
Well, Commissioner Anderson.
I think we've already done it.
Yeah.
And I think, I think we've done it, and, you know, there's a couple of phrases we want to add in, and I think maybe the next step is letting the public know and letting them comment.
But I think there's more to it than one statement, because as you look at the recommendations within there, there are things that say, do we want this strategy, or do we want this strategy?
Well, you gave the, like, financial tools as an example. Do we, do we want a 501(c)(3) or some kind? And I think we, I don't think we can, I don't think we can answer that question right now. I think...
So then the, the strategy becomes, we, we will evaluate funding, I don't know why we can do it now.
Because we don't know. Because we, we, we don't know, we don't know if we can get people interested in doing it. I mean, there, there are several, there were several potential strategies.
So if you say that we want to evaluate the opportunities, or the whatever, or 501(c)(3)'s, then you know that that's something that, that you do want to do. Do you want taxpayer dollars allocated to affordable housing? Then if the answer is yes, you say, we will, tax dollars will, at this level, would be allocated, or tax dollars would be allocated to affordable housing projects. Do we want town-owned land for affordable housing projects?
I think that depends on the project, doesn't it? Wouldn't we have to see the project first?
No, because what if you, what if you don't want a project on, what if you don't even want a project on town-owned land? So you either have to say, we will, we will assess projects that would be on town-owned land, or we would say, we will not leverage town-owned land for affordable or housing. Those are the things that we need to decide on. That's what's sitting in that document. There's a lot of decisions that are directional statements.
Now, Commissioner Gillis.
I forgot.
Want to interject?
Oh, it hasn't been that long.
Come on.
I was right on the ball.
She's been waving her hand over for a while.
I'm sorry. I'm just, I create frameworks. I don't, I don't look and then decide. I go, can we create a framework that help us with our decision-making?
I know.
Yes.
I don't think we should get into, in our framework, on things like public land... I don't think we should get into, in our framework, on things like, public land, housing on public land, and things like that, in the statement. I, I don't think that was, I, I think your first statement is spot-on, you know, for the first step. You can't do anything until somebody comes forward and says, I want to build on Gull Crest, or I want to build behind the town hall, or I want to build here.
We don't own, we don't own that. Oh, you mean over here at the parking lot?
Yeah. I, I forget where I am.
Because we don't own that.
Yeah, no, I forget where I am.
It's, it's up to you guys. I just know that we're going to have a lot of conversation about each one, and out of that might come a strategy.
True.
But I could go through that recommendation and create a whole bunch of them. But, I got a day job. I got a house, I got a school building advisory committee that I got a-
Three meetings tomorrow.
Three meetings tomorrow.
Matt, can you give us any kind of an update on where we're at on the methane study at the, at the?
Sure, sure, sure. Council, Council Thompson, I'd love to. Mr. Chairman, if I may, thank you. Spoke immediately the next day with Steve Harding, and met with the, with also, I think, two days later with the, with the firm to do the workforce, Arcadis. And we've said, you know, council approved this with funding in place to do that work, and we'd like to get it done. So, we're, apparently, we're having an early spring. So, I anticipate that we'll be able to get there sooner than we had first anticipated. So, we've got that work, you know, I guess you could say authorized to go forward. So, so as soon as we can get that going, we will. Also had them take a look at if there's a, and just be, just because it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a current item that sits out, there's PFAS, just in case. So, just said, well, while you're there, if PFAS is an issue or not, please let me know. So, we can find out about that. Some of it, because it's water and sewer, not an issue as much as, you know, if someone was putting a well at the property. So, that's, that's one area that he immediately identified, or the consultant we spoke to identified. So, but they are going to have some response relating to that. And then while they're there, we're having them take a look at the community garden as well, and the soil there, just to test that, just to-
Good.
To see where we're at. So, we'll try to, try to wrap that all together. But, that's, that's where we're at. And we'll, as soon as we get the report back, we'll give it to council. We'll get that back and deliver it at a council meeting.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Council Gillis.
Did we ever do a methone, methane test when we put the fields in?
No. You mean the athletic fields up top?
Yeah.
No, it wasn't-
It wasn't close enough?
I guess you could say, A, the thought was, it wasn't close enough, but B, I don't believe it was a consideration.
It wasn't a consideration.
Would be, would probably be the more closer to-
I was just curious.
I think that, I think it's pretty equidistant, isn't it?
No. As far as the, the athletic fields, I mean, you've got recycling center between there, paved roads. It's a pretty good, it's a pretty good distance from one to the other. So, as far as, you know, exposure or traveling, it, the closer you are, obviously, the, the greater the impact. So, I think it's considerable distance from there in relationship to the flows of it. And then the topo is also, is also different from that.
The what is something?
Topography. Change in elevation from upper fields to where the, where the recycle, or where the recycling facility and the cap landfill is, are probably maybe 20 or 30 feet of elevation would be my uneducated guess. But-
You know, from a historic perspective, how exciting to potentially have affordable housing development in lands that were part of the Jordan families. They were a fitting-
What?
As I understand it, the, the Gull Crest properties were generously donated by a, some member branch of the Jordan family.
The other side of the street.
The other side, yeah, the opposite.
We overlooked the Spruance River.
Yeah.
We, we actually purchased from, was it, was it a Jordan family? Or, I know it was part of our report, I can't remember who, but we actually purchased that land.
That was purchased through Astron.
Again, Deb was here, and probably, it was like, it was a relatively small, in today's number, all that, all that land that we were able to buy was quite a, quite a steal, in, certainly in today's terms.
Those, those Jordans create a lot of open space.
And we're very happy that you have.
Just one last point, for the benefit of the public. Council Thompson referenced issues of mandates, state mandates, unfunded mandates. There is a section, it's in the Constitution of the state, fortunately, from the perspective of home rule enthusiasts and advocates. And so, this is a hurdle for the state that gives them fits. They need to get a two-thirds vote to avoid this mandate of 90% annual funding to the municipalities for these mandates. So, just to give an example, they didn't come close with LD 2003 in the passage, in the, it has to be both House and Senate at two-thirds approval. So, I, I think it is probably doubtful they would get that for any of these items that are being mentioned. So, this would be heading towards some major court litigation at some point. Hopefully, that'll be avoided. But, so, from the perspective of home rule enthusiasts, there's a lot of hope. Whew, well.
Keep your hanky ready.
Because I am a home rule enthusiast. I guess-
Home rule enthusiast, local rule.
I know Deb's an enthusiast. No, I'm kidding.
All right.
All right. Well, I think we're at the end, unless there are any other comments.
Well, what are we doing? Does, do I, I know we can't vote, but is there consensus that we at least do what I suggested for the ADUs?
Yeah.
Which would be, the town should consider proportional changes to setbacks, lot coverage to allow detached ADU development in areas where an ADU would otherwise be unavailable to a property owner. That's number five.
So, that's got to be, to move forward on that, that would now go to the ordinance committee.
Council, to send it to-
The council first to refer it to.
Send it to the ordinance committee.
Okay.
Right. And the town should develop a system to track the number of ADUs. I don't think that's an ordinance committee issue. But that could go to the town council for a vote.
We've got to develop-
Okay.
What? We'd have to, yeah, develop something.
On, on that, Council Anderson, if I may, Mr. Chair. On number six, that would, that'd be something that you would want to, you know, if you had number five, you would refer that to the ordinance committee, would be the action. And then, could have on that same item, an additional motion to direct staff to develop, you know, develop-
Tracking mechanism.
Tracking mechanism in, in line with the desires of number six. And that could, and that gives us direction and puts us on our way. And we can get to that.
And one nice thing I think we could do to continue to keep this top of mind for us is maybe get some kind of a report. I mean, there seems to be, there was like a built-up demand to get some ADUs. I was certainly getting a lot of pressure to, to get that done. Have we had a number of ADU permits? But maybe we could get a, some kind of a report on a, on a monthly basis for a while to see how, how much, how many ADUs are being applied for and built. I'd really like to keep an eye on that. And, and because it's a signal and a sign that some, some affordable units are being built.
Maybe quarterly.
Or quarterly. Quarterly would be fine.
I think monthly's a little-
I'd be fine. But I think it would be one way to keep kind of this in front of us.
I, I know that there's been questions about the separate structures being turned into ADUs, which, at this moment, is not permissible. And that's why I'd like to get that ordinance changed as quickly as possible, so that people can get that done this summer.
But that, that was something that came up late in our conversations. And I think it's something everybody was pretty much in agreement with. But if that's, if that's something that we could, and, and we've got that, that's the one that lines up perfectly with all our meetings, right? Okay.
Just a quick question, as far as Council Jordan's vision statement. Would you like to have that for council action as well on the April agenda?
Are you giving me, are you delegating?
No, I'm just, just inquiring. You've, you've already got the work complete. First draft, only draft. But it's, but I don't know if that's something that you'd like to-
I got to tweak it, because it was just quick. It only took me like five minutes. I'll, I'll add a few other things.
Is that, is that an item that you'd like to have that for the April agenda to either?
What?
Yeah.
Well, or if you ever typed it.
I'll type.
You wanted to add to it, right?
I'm going to add to it. I want to tweak it. It's just, it, it needs a little more panache.
But if, if you'd like, we could, you know, that, that's an item that we could have there. I mean, obviously, you could, you could look at it there and say, yes, we like it. Or you could, you know, you could take no actions, just say, you know, bring it back a month later after we're finding it.
That really sucks. You could say that, too. Get into my martini time here. Come on.
Sorry. But if you could, I just want, I'm just trying to keep our, our dance card lined up for-
I'll get it to you.
Now, I do have a last question. So, is there a consensus to prohibit short-term rentals of ADUs?
Exactly.
That is the consensus.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's what I-
Okay.
And, and that's, that's an interesting one. I think it is a, that was one of the tools that they were, wanted to use to encourage people to do the ADUs, so they could afford to do it. But it's clearly something that's not in line with what we already have in place to limit, or make some strong limits to short-term rentals in town.
It took us 18 months to do that short-term rental ordinance.
Council Gillis.
Penny, in the, when you were doing the short-term rental before, it was, it involved housing most of the time, correct? It was housing that was being used for short-term rental?
It was houses, yeah.
And, and ADUs, or side apartments, or anything that they could rent out.
But the, but the problems that arose and caused all this were houses that were being rented.
Oh, yeah, like full houses for weekend parties.
Parties. And, and that's where, why, why that whole thing came about. I'm wondering, some of these ADUs may be for elderly people that could have an opportunity to make a little money in the summertime if they rented out their, I mean, I don't want to start a whole new ADU issue.
You don't want to start a whole new short-term rental thing. They can rent it for a month, two months, or 30 days.
Oh, you, they can do that. Okay.
They can do, they can do that. And, and there's no limit to, if they wanted to have their mother-in-law move in in the long term.
No, I know that. It was more like-
I think that's the way our, our short-term rental is now. It's got it, we, they can do it now if they've got over 30 days, right?
It has to be over 30 days.
They can do a rental over 30 days. It's not considered a short-term rental.
Okay, all right. So, it's not like you can't vacation in Cape in someone's-
I don't want you guys to be spending all your ordinance time on short-term rentals.
Okay, well, so, then, we just go with the ordinance the way it was drafted, then? With the exception of language amendment that-
Tim had some-
That-
You had, you had one piece that you needed to change, didn't you, that you mentioned?
Yeah, there was a phrase to reinserted. Subject to setbacks, I can give you the phrase.
Okay.
Are you okay with it not being short-term rental?
Yeah. The only other kind of stylistic question is, what Maureen thinks, is to, would it make sense to put the ADU exception in the short-term rental ordinance itself versus off separately in another section? But, you know, that's just a strategy that, you know, that you all can decide that in the ordinance committee.
That's right. That's right.
I mean, in other words, wouldn't it make sense?
What exception?
I, I think there would be a logic to dealing with the ADU carve-out in the short-term rental ordinance itself, but-
What do, what do you mean by carve-out?
Well, if you're saying that ADUs would not qualify for short-term rental.
Oh, yeah. So, it should be in both places. The, the amendment needs to be in the ADU section, and then also in the short-term rental section.
It seems to me, people, if they're looking at, does this qualify as a short-term rental, they got to look at that section first. Instead of, but, but maybe, it's not a big issue with, for us.
You've even confused me. So, I'm going to have to look into that. I don't see, yeah, I don't see where there's an exception, but-
You don't?
No, because we're saying that you can't do it, just like you can't do it anywhere.
Okay.
Do you get what I mean? Like, you can't do a short-term rental now, so you can't do a short-term rental in an ADU. So, I'm not seeing where there's an exception.
Well, in other words, I, I think the proposal is to put in express paragraph saying, it's prohibited within ADUs.
Correct.
I'm just saying, the choice could be to address it within the short-term rental ordinance.
Put it in both spots.
It's the same meaning. It's just, it's a strategy, you know.
Yeah, we'll look at it and figure it out.
Sure.
Do we have public comment?
Was that the opportunity, was that the beginning?
So, oh, we have, we did decide what to do with the vision statement. Okay.
And he's going to work out.
Matt delegated.
No hand.
I think we're done.
Not exactly.
Thank you very much.
No public comment?
The opportunity was at the beginning of the-
And there were no hands raised, right? Were there, Tim? No, no.
We done? I think so.